Good evening, everyone. If you haven't been here before, welcome to the Doylestown Township Community Meeting Room. Before the start of tonight's regular meeting, the supervisors met at 2:40 with our telecommunications advisory board to teach us how to use these microphones. Sadly, the person who needed the tutorial most, Mr. Garten, was not there. If we do not use our microphones appropriately, we get like a clown red-nosed beep here.
It beeped already.
To indicate that, you need to go forward with your voice to the microphone. So that's what we did at 2:40. At 3 o'clock, we had a budget work session, and at 4 o'clock, we had interviews for boards and commissions. And we also had an executive session that dealt with personnel litigation and real estate matters. Now, tonight, we are starting with presentations from our Bike and Hike Committee to begin. Tom Kelso.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just wanted to go over some, we've got a lot going on with Bike and Hike Committees, as most of the committees do, and I just wanted to run through those quickly with you. The major one we have going on right now is Turk Road, where we're trying to connect into Doylestown, trying to connect a number of communities, a number of our neighborhoods in. And that project's going extremely well. It's a feasibility study. We've got great neighborhood contacts there, and so we're excited about it. We have a public meeting coming up on that in early October.
Yes, October 2nd.
Yeah.
Right in this room.
So it's going great. It's turned out to be, it's probably our most difficult project out there, but at the same time, probably the most rewarding, I think, when we finally get it completed. The next project is, I skipped, I messed that up, didn't I? The next project is the Shady Retreat Road, and that one is under a TAP grant, so that takes us all the way through construction. And that's essentially starting at State Street, down Burpee Road, and out Shady Retreat. And it's Phase 1. The Board has seen this, I think the first presentation of the Board on this was two years ago. And it's nearing the stage where we're starting to submit things to PennDOT for approval. And we're working, we've got some tough ones there, too, but we've had some great meetings with some of the commercial property owners especially. The next one is one you have on your agenda tonight, and I probably have it mistitled here. It's the 202 Route 13 Feasibility Study. And this one evolved out of the Wawa in Doylestown, where we met with them, met with the Borough, talked about trails, and I think they offered up, what was it, $15,000, and are obtaining a permit to extend the trail across the 202 bypass. So this is that study. This is what came out of that. And it will take us from Central Park out to Poole's Corner. But the primary focus is South Main Street, Southeaston Road, extending that trail out of the Borough down towards Edison. And the money on that, I don't, the more I talk about it now, the less I have to talk about it later.
Okay.
It's a $30,000 proposal from Baker Engineering, but that's covered by-
Is this $7,500 match?
Pardon me?
$7,500 match?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, the main funding comes through the William Penn Foundation, which is one of our biggest benefactors on our trail program. So we're excited about that, too, being able to take a little money and extend it quite a ways. And then just a few things happening in our neighborhood that aren't Doylestown Township specific projects. The Chalfont Connector, the extension of the Neshammany Greenway up to Chalfont, the bids were opened, that project looks like it's moving forward. And it's, it helps, well, is it Cedar Crest on Upper State Road? And it'll connect them into the 202 Parkway Trail.
Wonderful.
And connect us into Chalfont.
Wonderful.
So it's, it's moving ahead. It was a long time in coming. And then the other big one is the Bucks County Planning Commission's Neshammany Greenway Project.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the one that has evolved over the years, but they're moving slowly through the design process on that. And they're already started the design of the next phase that'll take us all the way down into Buckingham Township. So it'll complete the Neshammany Greenway in our township. And that should all happen, the construction and everything should happen within the next five years on that.
Wonderful.
So it's, there's a lot going on, we're excited about it. I think we have some other projects in the wings we'll bring forward to you in the conceptual stage. Any questions?
Lana.
You should know that part of, one of the considerations of our budget meeting earlier was set aside money so we can manage and maintain our 30 miles of trails. So just so you know, so we're gonna have more than 30 miles of trails very soon.
We're getting a lot of mileage out of our neighbors here, too, in the county. So it's great having them involved in it. And we're going back to the old days where we scrapped together the match some way. And I think on the, on the South Main Street one, I have some money in there even through our company, just volunteering. We used to do a lot of that, the early studies were done that way.
You've been volunteering in this for like 25 years, Tom.
Actually, it's longer, but that's, yeah.
Just add up all your hours right here.
I enjoy it. I enjoy working with all of you.
We really appreciate your work. Thank you.
It was interesting, and you'd like to know this, I think, we met with the Bicycle Coalition of Philadelphia last week, Stephanie. They came out and wanted to reach out to the suburbs. And, and the one thing the fellow that did the presentation said, there are two communities in the state, or within this region at least, that really promote trails and have been successful, and it's us in Haverford Township, I think.
Haverford?
Yeah. So we're in, we're in good company.
No, they're in good company.
Yeah. You're right.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
All right, telecommunications advisory board, Keith Peters.
Good evening.
Hi.
For those of you that don't know me, I'm Keith Peters. I'm vice chairman of the telecommunications advisory committee. I'm a volunteer member, and I'm being reminded to speak closely into the microphone. It's good following the Bike and Hike Committee because one of the projects that we have going on right now is putting together a video of the Bike and Hike Path System. So we're hoping to do that in 2019 to complete that. So I'm doing both a 2018 and a 2019 recap. There are five members on our board. Let's see if I can get this here. We have a PowerPoint presentation that has the five members listed, and the, I'm lost on how to do the slideshow. Thank you. So there are five members on the committee, and we have two associate members, one of which is a police officer, which we're very happy to have. She's helping us prepare a police welcome video. Our current liaison is Jennifer Herring. Last year, it was Ms. Mannion, and we're happy to have all the members of the, and the public, too, come to our meetings the second Monday of every month here in the township building. Our primary contribution last year was the bicentennial video. We put together all of the events, the gala, the groundbreaking, the previous year's wrecking ball and the building stuff, and a time lapse of all of that stuff, so that we have the Time Capsule, the Oscar Hammerstein Sing in July, a Veterans Day Celebration. Those were all considered bicentennial things. We have time lapse of the building construction and destruction. And we're continuing to produce things with Doylestown Health, with the Walk with the Doc presentation, and the Senior Task Force, which technically, I guess, has dissolved, but they still offer us stuff. And for 2019, we're looking at doing the Bike and Hike thing. We're also looking at doing something for the new residents in the township. We're calling it Welcome Wagon unofficially because we don't have a good title yet. It's, Welcome Wagon is a trademarked name, so we can't use that. But we're gonna call it a new resident video or something along those lines, that we're working on that, and we're hoping to have that available for new residents in the area too. This year, we're hoping to shoot it soon. There's a script. Art Zapolski did an excellent script, and we're looking to shoot that very soon. We're happy to partner with people like the hospital, the YMCA, the school district in Del Valle University, as well as the Doylestown Historical Society, to put together programs that are of interest and entertaining to the residents of the township. Other boards and commissions are borrowing the equipment. For example, tonight, the Environmental Advisory Council is taping a presentation at Del Valle University that we hope to make a, get video from, to make a program. I wrote down the word "cross-pollination" because we're trying to help use telecommunications as a means to enlarge the communication efforts that the township is making to the residents by using the telecommunications as one of the means to further things like the newsletter and the YouTube and the DTV and so forth. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work. Thank you.
Great job.
All right, and last, Kathy Brown for the Dog Park Committee.
All right, let's see if I can do this. It was there. Where is view? Where's full screen? Yeah. Come up here to slideshow. Click there, and from beginning. Oh, and it'll do it. Oh, lucky there, there it is. I'm used to a different type of computer. My name's Kathy Brown. I'm chair of the Dog Park Advisory Board. We are celebrating almost our seventh year. We opened, we opened September 22nd, 2012. So we have had many successful years. Did I do the math right? Yeah, seven years. We're getting ready to start. We meet on Mondays at 5:00, the first Monday of the month. Our members are all volunteers, like the rest of the boards. Donna Coughlin, David Cochrane, Kristin McCouch, Caitlin Stack, Deb McComas, Andrew Miller, Kathy Brown, that's me, Barbara Lyons is our liaison, Carolyn Brinker in the Borough, and Karen Sweeney obviously has helped us tremendously from Park and Rec. I was holding it in page, there we go. We have 449 active members, those are humans. We have 744 registered dogs. The improvements from 2018, we moved, when we opened seven years ago, we had a small dog area that was a half acre and a large dog area that was an acre and a half. In our growing, or in our experiencing what people and what we need, we moved the fence so that we have three areas that are one acre. We had one half acre, an acre and a half, and then a full acre. And we have changed the fence line so that we have three one-acre off-leash areas. In doing that, we can rotate the dogs from area to area, so we are very proud to say after seven years, we have turf. We actually have grass in our dog park. And that is a big thing, because many of them who have not planned out, as we have, have mud or dirt. So we're, we're proud of that. Another thing that, this is really cool, and one of our dog park members developed an app. And when you become a member of the dog park, you can download this app, it's free, and you can see who is at the dog park, or when dogs are going to be at the dog park. So, just like kids, certain dogs get along and certain dogs do not. And using this app, you can see who's gonna be at the dog park. And if it's a dog that your dog plays well, loves playing with, you go. If it's a dog that your dog doesn't like, you avoid going at that time. So that's an improvement one of our members did and has graciously, you know, given it to us. All right, recommendations, improvements for the coming year. Upgrade our access system. We have had the same system since the beginning, and it has worked, but if we can upgrade the system to what the township uses now, if there's a problem, it can be remotely taken care of. The gate can be opened and closed remotely from here. Also, we plan on, what we would like to do is install cameras. And there are three cameras in the off-leash area, one for each off-leash area, and then a camera at the entrance. We planned the dog park, and you guys know that. We planned it, we do an orientation, which I'll talk about. We know that when people go to the dog park with their dog, they know how to behave, they know how their dog should behave. That's in a perfect world. Sometimes dogs misbehave. Having these cameras will allow us to observe what's going on in the dog park, and if an incident occurs, which very few have, but if it does, we can see what happened. That's, we can, we can watch and we can address things accordingly. The access system, again, it's an improvement that is needed, one, because of wear and tear on what we have, and two, because of, one, it is connected to the township, and two, it is an upgrade as far as the accessibility. Now, we are requesting, this is our big recommendation, and we are requesting that we are able to move forward with this. So Dave will speak more of this later on. Orientation, this is a repeat. Every potential member must go to orientation. Suzie dances of Training Tales, does the meat of it. Every member knows what to expect at the dog park and how the member and his or her dog should behave. We, as Dog Park Advisory Board, we support Suzie. So it's once a month. We believe that this is why our dog park is so successful. Fido Float is our big fundraiser. I say that with a smile. I say it's the most wonderful day of the year. Obviously, I'm a dog person. Fanny Chapman opens its doors to dogs and their owners. This was a short video, but unfortunately, my Mac doesn't communicate with this. So you get to see the people anxiously waiting to enter at 11:30 on Saturday. Doylestown Area Medical Center has been a huge supporter of the dog park and Fido Float, and I'm happy to say that we brought right at $1,000 from that event for the dog park. We also, in the bicentennial, we did Dogs Around Doylestown. I have to say, these are ways to support the dog park. If you have an office, if you have clients, if you have patients, and you put that poster up on your wall, I guarantee your patients are gonna feel better. So I encourage, this is available at the township, $10 each, two for 15. We also have magnets. It all goes to the dog park. Conclusion, successful year so far. We have a fantastic board. The focus on 2019, '20 is to upgrade the access system, finish orientation video, where's the TAB? We're gonna hopefully work with TAB to do that, and finish the drainage improvements. Any questions?
Yes, I had one, Kathy. Of the 449 members, is that fairly static now? Do you see membership increasing, or?
It stays right around the 450.
Okay.
Between four and 450. And, and that was, you know, you might have a membership that has two people under that membership, but we're, we're pretty steady.
Okay.
Okay. Any, any questions?
Thank you, Kathy. Great job. We have many boards and commissions, and they're populated by volunteers from out, from out Doylestown Township. They do an amazing job for us. They raise money, they volunteer their time and expertise, so we're always so grateful. And we take the time throughout these months to hear from every one of our boards and commissions. So we spread them out, we give them the time if they need to present their work. So thank you, everybody, for your presentations tonight. Are there any visitors at public comments? Okay, seeing no hands. All right, announcements. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, October 1st at 5:00 p.m. We're gonna have our fourth budget work session, I think it's the fourth one, on the same day at 3:00 p.m. The Thompson Performing Arts Series continues with the presentation of Disney's Mary Poppins' Returns at the CNN Bank Amphitheater in Central Park on Saturday, 28th. That movie will start at dusk, and it is free to everyone. Discussion of the indoor recreation facility is a very important meeting. It is this Thursday at 7:00 at this, in this room. They're asking you to come at 6:30 to sign up. It's a discussion regarding the size, function, amenities of, of the community parking rec center that we will be building. It's in planning stage right now, so we want as much community input as possible to see what that building is going to look like. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And the drop-off site is the New Britain entrance to Central Park. Kids Castle will be opening, we hope, in mid-October. It's temporarily closed to add more play equipment for people of all abilities. And then, and the 2019 Suicide Prevention Conference is October 7th at Del Valle University, 8:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. It's an organization sponsored by the Lenape Valley Foundation. All right, next item on the agenda is the minutes approval for the regular meeting of August 20th, 2019. Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Any corrections or changes? Mr. Colletto?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I will, thank you, but I offer one correction. Yes.
Missed one?
Yes. On page 11, Dick Bach is misspelled, I think it's B-A-C-H, not B-O-C-K. So with that motion and second, and one correction, I'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Really disappointed.
Yeah.
Didn't want to have to do that.
It's my committee, too.
Yeah. All right, next item on the agenda is a letter we received from Kimberly Canberra, Executive Director of CB Care's Educational Foundation, asking us for a waiver of $209.50 used fees and other fees for use.
Make a motion to approve the waiver?
I'll second.
Calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain. I'm no longer a member of this board, but my continued interest and support of this organization just keeps me too interested, and so I don't want to have any conflict. So it's a great organization, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is an Eagle Scout request that we waive zoning permit fee of $80. The young man is James Boyle. His Eagle Scout project is upcoming, and he's doing a soccer kickball. Where is it? Could it be?
It's at the Chalfont New Britain Sewer Treatment Plant, and they have spoken with PA Rush, and they are okay with that being placed on their property.
Okay. Is there a consideration for a waiver of this fee from the board?
Make that motion to waive the fee.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We sadly have the resignation of Ed Evenbach from the Ways and Means simply because he was appointed as a paid person for our financial department. So there's a motion to, is there a motion to accept his resignation?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't want, I want you to know how happy we are. He is our paid consultant, and he still is back there doing the telecommunications advisory work, so thank you, Ed. Next item is a facilities request from a women's place, asking that we make some space, like we don't have enough space here, available for their, for some of their staff meetings. And they look to be wanting to do that at least a couple of times a year, it says. Thoughts, considerations?
Well, one, I was, it doesn't say what times they would be doing that. Is this work hours or after work hours?
Staff meetings, monthly staff meetings, I don't know. We can get more information.
I guess it's probably daytime. We can accommodate that as long as we don't have anything in-house.
Well, let's get more information. If it works with our, with our calendars, are you okay with it?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing that, then.
Okay. My only concern is I'm not sure what they need by technology means, so we'll.
We'll find out.
Okay, good.
Do you want it to come back, or can we?
No, I think we can have it now. Yes.
I'm not sure about the precedent being set. I mean, that's giving them the room for free that we charge everyone else for, and I'm, I'm not so, it's not because it's a women's place, it could be for any. I mean, I donate to a women's place, so it's not, it's not that. I fully support what they do. I'm just not sure about setting a precedent, in this case, for, what is it, $100 for the meeting room. I'm not, I'm not comfortable just making an exception in this case for a charity. Hearing none?
Like I said, I think if we find out it's during normal hours, I don't have a problem for now waiving that fee during normal hours. It's not gonna cost us anything else. So that's my perspective.
We do have a policy for allowing certain dollar amounts to be waived for nonprofits, right? Typically, $1,000.
Right.
For permits.
Waivers and fees and permits, and, you know, exactly, we do waive up to $1,000. This is a little bit different in my mind. We're giving, giving them the use of our facility that we charge every other organization for.
My other thinking on that was, is if we can, we want to encourage more people to use it by opening it up during the day, more people see it, more people want to use it, and then that'll grow over time. So I think it's a good thing to get it out there and get it advertised, so that's why I'm okay for right now.
I think we can take it on a case-by-case basis without committing ourselves to. If we need to develop a policy, we will. You saying with that?
Yeah, I agree, I agree with what you're saying there.
All right, is there a motion on this particular question? Approving the women's place using this room occasionally for meetings, so long as it's in the day?
During the day.
During the day.
Yep.
Okay.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's five and O.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Colletto.
No, I go with the boards. I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm a team player.
All right. We received communication from White Tail Disposal, notice of increase in billing. So I guess this is just for our information. We don't need to do anything with it.
Not at this time, if you'd like them to come and explain further why they're increasing their fees associated with recycling. It is a fee that they had waived previously and were providing complimentary, but due to the disposal costs that they're beginning to incur, they need to include that fee now, and I believe it's around $18 a quarter that they're adding on. They're still holding their fee for trash hauling still around $69, but they are willing to come and explain further. But you have their letter and their information that they had sent to their customers as well. One suggestion I might have is that we have the EAC take a look at our existing trash recycling ordinances. They are probably almost 30 years old, 25, 30 years old, and with the markets and things changing, it might be something that we want to consider and look at.
Okay. Make it happen.
Okay.
Okay, next item on the agenda, report from a solicitor.
Nothing that we're not discussing later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Chief?
Yes, we received information mid-morning from PennDOT.
Yes, we received information mid-morning from PennDOT. They will be continuing their milling and paving work on Edison Furlong Road over the next couple of days between 611 and York Road, so I would expect delays and partial closures at some point during the day. I don't exactly know how long the construction's gonna take.
Okay. Uh-oh, Ed's here.
I did not get a red bulb, I'm good.
Anything else, Chief?
That's it.
Township Engineer?
Nothing at this time.
Director of Operations?
You have my memo, change order number two for the 2019 road program. This is in addition to change order number one, which you've already approved. This would be for paving, the extension of Barrett Road down to the split with Old Dublin Pike, portion of Old Dublin Pike and Weldon Drive. The total for the change order is $88,324.50. That brings the total paving contract for 2019 to $600,040.20. I'm asking for your approval of that change order number two, please.
Okay, any consideration for the request for change order number two, adding those three roads for paving this year?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, before we call the question, Jeff, your letter to J.D. Morrissey indicates that if you're in agreement with this change order, is there some concern that they might be not in agreement with this change order?
No, just that they would need to sign it for their approval.
Pro forma quest? Okay.
Yeah, Barbara Rook, they've, they've signed this and it's in the packet to be signed. We just had this prior to packet going out on Friday, they've already executed the change order.
Okay, thank you.
On their end.
Thank you, all right. All in the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, next change order.
Change order is for the municipal complex, Penn Builders, change order 12RR is revision, 12 is revised, basically 12 revision, or I'm sorry, change order 12 is for additional mill work, and if you recall, we had a scope change and I asked you to approve that. This is documenting that change finally, plus the addition of some electric work here in this meeting room for this dais, as well as some ceiling changes. The total for change order 12RR totals $10,393.
Okay, Ken, you want to speak to this at all? Ken, do you want to speak to this at all?
Just a question. Does this pretty much wrap up all our change orders and for the building?
Well, I do have the Electrotech change order right behind this, but these two change orders on this, yes.
Other than these that you're coming?
Correct.
Other than those that you're coming tonight?
Correct.
That's pretty much, and our punch list is pretty well wrapped up too from...
My understanding punch list is completed except for a few items.
Ken, you got red lighted.
Good thing.
Okay, is there a...
I'll make a motion to approve those change orders.
I'll second.
Okay, calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think it's gonna become a thing, who gets the red light at these meetings? We should take a tally. All right, next item on the agenda, I hope we still have another change order.
Yes, next item is Electrotech change order number eight. This is basically to take the police department carport and tie it into this building and into the backup generator. If you recall, the carport was constructed in phase one and had to be done so in its own power, so it could get up and running and utilize it. So this change is from Electrotech, the electrical contractors, for $8,945.18, and this would tie that into that, which allowed to power the security system access and give us 24-hour backup power with the generator.
Now, this is a good thing, so I'll make that motion to approve this.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Are you done?
Nope. 2019 structure repairs bid rejection, recommendation to reject the bids and rebid. We basically on September 10th received four bids for the repairs to the structures on the Wells Road Bridge, which just on the western side of the 202 Parkway down here, on the upstream side, there's some scour and repairs that need to be done. You could see that our engineer's estimate was below the, below the prevailing wage rate amount, and so the bids received were not for prevailing wage rates. So my recommendation, and also after discussion from, with Mr. Garten, is that we reject the bids and we rebid it immediately and go from there. This is not a question of budget, it is a prevailing wage rate issue. So we will, with your approval, we will reject the bids and rebid immediately for next meeting.
Okay.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Dave, one more?
Two more.
Two more.
Turk Park Playground Replacement, this is the George Ely Associates proposal. This proposal has, number one, is it a budget item, it was programmed for 2019? The proposal is to basically remove the, basically the existing playground at Turk One behind the baseball backstop. It has deteriorated to the point where we cannot repair it or find parts to repair it, and is identified in the insurance audit as such, repairs are needed and we cannot basically find the parts. So we budgeted the replacement, the proposal's for $48,798, and this is a CoStar's purchase.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
Ken seems to be, you got questions?
Oh, all right, I'll make the second, but I do have a question.
Okay, discussion.
So we have the Play World equipment, is that used somewhere else, similar equipment?
Yes, the Play World is, actually I would look to Karen, but I know the Play World equipment is down at Kids Castle, is actually the new structure that's going in Kids Castle's Play World, and I don't know if Play World, is Play World over at Turk Two? Turk Two is also Play World as well.
So one of my questions is, I did a quick look at Play World and the equipment and some other equipment, and I don't want to go into too many details, but I was curious whether, I don't see them using many recycled materials. I don't know if you've looked at other, they do?
Yes.
Okay, great, wonderful.
Karen is confirming that they'd use recycled material.
Thank you.
We've had a longstanding relationship with Ely Associates on these projects as well, so.
Wonderful, thank you, thank you Karen. All right, there's a motion and a second, any other conversation? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
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 And as Kathy Brown alluded to, this last item is the access control system and cameras for the dog park. Basically, when this building, the system in this building is from the Access Control Corporation, is in a Vigilon system, all the door access and the cameras. So we basically, we're partnering with Vigilon again to provide an integrated system that would work and have staff trained on both. So for the cameras and for the access control, our fobs will work there and basically providing that control at the dog park. It's my understanding that the Dog Park Committee voted on this and made a recommendation to take, bring this to the board. We met with Access Control Corporation, they're located in Warminster, a local company, and they provide us with the proposal. Their proposal is for the access control system and for the cameras. That total is $9,214. There's additional, that's, those are the one-time costs, there's additional costs which include the purchase of the key fobs as well as, and that's a one-time cost when the fobs are purchased, but also there is the yearly, what they call the Blue Diamond Protection Plan. This is a remote system, so it's a standalone, so they're recommending that. That would give us access to repairs quickly. And there also, requirement is to have their hosting, the Vigilon Blue Hosting System. So the Blue Diamond Protection Plan is $45 a year, and the Vigilon Blue Hosting is, oh, I'm sorry, a month, thank you Chief, and the Vigilon Blue Hosting is $90 a month. Asking for your approval on that proposal.
Okay. We heard Kathy speak to this, I think this money comes from the Dog Park budget, and we'll entertain a motion to approve this purchase. I'll move to approve. Okay?
I'll second.
Any questions, discussion, all in favor of the motion?
I have one question, who pays for the fobs? Member does?
Yeah.
Okay.
All the, all this money is coming, this cost is coming from Dog Park.
Great.
And the fobs. Motion and second, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to managers' comments.
Nothing at this time.
Guys, supervisor, Rick, we'll start with you since you have something on the agenda here.
Okay, two things, I'd like to nominate Daniel Steriker to the DTM board, I make that motion, I hope you second and approve his membership, we interviewed him a short while ago.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
And the next item is the water ordinance, we've talked about it for the last few months, and, and I, the reason the discussion goes on and on, when we have ordinances, just for the public's sake, to understand that it goes through the committee and then the staff reviews it, hash it back to the committee, then the Board of Supervisors reviews it, has questions, we have, goes back to the committee, which is residents in our township, they've got ideas, and at some point it goes to the solicitor, he tries to put it into legal form and shape, and then it comes back again. So that's the reason these things take quite a while. And one we had, I mentioned the last meeting, with the DTMA, Jen and myself going through some issues back and forth, and I want to bring the board up to date in case they didn't notice, there was a little bit of a change in this ordinance, based on conversations and Jen's suggestion. Originally it was if you had a private well and you had a pump, or yeah, pipe in front of your house, at time of sale, you had to hook up. We subsequently added that at the time of sale, that you need to get your water tested, and if your water passes, just like we do with the sewers, if the sewer test pass, you don't have to hook up, same with that. So now that extra section that we added says that they can have a water test, if the water test passes federal guidelines, then you can keep your well. If it doesn't meet federal guidelines, then you have to hook up. Keith is here, Keith Haas, the Director of DTM is here, and one of the points he saw in here, it says some more discussion on four of the contaminants, so Keith can come up now and explain why there, he wants, or he's suggesting some more discussion on these four contaminants, but if there's any issues before that, or indifferent from that, Keith can certainly answer.
I don't want Keith to take sole responsibility for that, because when we talked about it, I thought these matters should be discussed with the board, because you can solve the coliform bacteria with just doing a, drop some chlorine in it, and pH you can do with a water softener, same thing with iron and manganese, and didn't think it was appropriate to, without the board's discussion, to impose upon residents the need to connect to public water if there's a very inexpensive fix to these things, but clearly the other things that are serious health issues are something different.
Yeah, that's correct. So, the list in front of you has primary contaminants, which are directly impact your health. PFOS, lead, VOCs are examples of that, and even bacteria. The secondary contaminants that, that are also on the list, iron, manganese, pH, those are recommended by the federal government to be tested yearly. They can give an indication of a well failure, so that's why they're, have been added to the list. It's a good idea for private well owners to test for those contaminants yearly anyway. So those, that's primarily the reason why all of those contaminants are on the list. So the federal government and the state regulates both primary and secondary. Secondary can affect the odor of your water, the taste of your water, as well as the visual aesthetic appearance of your water. So that's pretty much the all-encompassing list, which we were told a state-certified lab can test for all of those contaminants at a cost between $500 and $600 at the time of sale. That would include them going to your house, testing and sampling.
Jeff, can we build into this ordinance the contingencies that if you have these other secondary issues, especially the iron and manganese, were two subsequent years or two succeeding years, I should say, that they have to tie in then?
Well, you can, you can certainly, you can certainly choose to do that if you want. I mean, this is, I think we're bringing this to your attention because we wanted to make sure there was an understanding that there are different kinds of contaminants, both with respect to the serious nature of it, and also with respect to how you solve the problem. That's, and you know, obviously, I don't think Keith would disagree, we're not here just to find a way to have the DTMA get much additional tap-in fees or customers. We're here for the purposes of making sure that our public has safe drinking water from their own wells.
Perhaps we can see a draft of the contingency?
Sure, I think that you obviously are hearing this for the first time, so it would be a good idea if you all thought about that concept before we start. I mean, it's better to get this right than to be in a hurry.
As a base point, I like it that the ordinance contemplates hooking up if you have a failure, not hooking up just upon sale, so I think that's a good idea. All right, so we'll just table this, consider it, and maybe bring it back next meeting?
So just to get, the discussion then that we'll have to have is what exactly would be the contaminants that would trigger a connection?
And then we're gonna talk about a further follow-up testing also, that concept. So that is something that you and I and the township manager will need to talk about.
Sure.
Board will need to be thinking about that issue, but also the list of contaminants.
Okay, thank you.
Just, Keith, before you leave, a question not related to the, this draft here, but if I don't sell, if I'm not selling my house and I want to have it tested, does the state, is the only, is the state authority the only one that can do it, is it still gonna cost me $500?
Yeah, that's pretty much, I would say, the going rate for a water test, whether you have it done by a state-certified laboratory or not.
Okay.
There's not a lot of laboratory companies that test, test well water or public water for that matter.
The other thing is that the testing costs are significant for things like PFOS and lead and things like that, that are more difficult, comprehensive tests. A test for total fecal coliform bacteria is not at $500.
Right.
No, the test is 500 for all eight of these, right?
Total, yeah, total.
Okay, thank you.
You got it, thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Jen, you have anything?
Well, I think this brings up like a larger issue, which is, we're concerned about the water quality in the township, there's nothing indicating that there's an emergency or anything like that, but I would also like to see if we could work on addressing wells that are not near pipes. If we're really concerned that these contaminants are in well water, they're obviously not gonna be isolated to just the ones in front of the pipes in the road.
Do you have anything, other supervisors' comments, Jen?
We'll, we'll consider that when we have our discussion also, because it should be in the same ordinance.
Okay. Yes, we did interview for the Park and Rec Board vacancy, and I would like to make a motion to appoint Kelly McGowan to fill the vacancy.
Is there a second? All in favor of the appointment of Kelly McGowan to Park and Rec?
Aye.
Aye. Additionally, the EAC is hosting again, they're hosting another wonderful conference in, at Dalval University on Thursday at 7:00 PM, which is conflicting with our, our meeting for the recreation facility, but if you are so inclined, please join the EAC, they're gonna be discussing a program called Ready for 100, which is a movement to encourage municipalities to go to 100% renewable energy by 2050, and I think that's about it.
Thank you. Ryan?
We also met in our interviews tonight with Kevin Kane, and I would like to... We also met in our interviews tonight with Kevin Kane, and I would like to make a recommendation to, or a motion to appoint Kevin to our Kids Castle Committee.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then, one last thing, and I know it'll come up again in our announcements, but Barb read in the beginning announcements about the meeting that's taking place this Thursday, on the 19th, for the recreation, the new rec building. I am, again, giving my strong encouragement. This is, right now, the number-one topic that I get asked about. So it's important that your voices are heard. There's a lot of different options and opinions, and you know, it's the staff and the board talking to each other, but we need to hear from you. So, please, make it a point to come out, so you can hear what we're thinking, and we can hear from you guys as well.
Thank you. Ken, you have anything?
Yes, two items. We also interviewed for auditor position, so I'd like to make a motion that we hire Kelly Gallardi for that position.
Hire?
Point.
A point, sorry.
Okay, we'll do that.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor with the appointment of Kelly Gallardi to the Board of Auditors? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The second item I had, this is the, our pension monitoring report, that the Pension Committee has been working with the investment advisors. And what, this is very, very detailed, but I wanted to share with everybody, the sections that are in here. One is market overview. The second is change in market value. The third is performance by asset class versus the benchmark, and summary of fees. So, I know you would like that one, Barb. But what the boards, what the pension advisory committee's tough act is going to do, is how do they synthesize this down into a three- or four-page report for the Board of Supervisors. But this will allow them to review in very much detail, be able to monitor the performance of those pensions going forward. So it was a great job.
Thanks, Ken. I'm glad you said synthesize it down, rather than dumb it down for the Board.
I didn't say dumb.
I know, you didn't. I appreciate that. I represent Doylestown Township on the Bucks County Association of Township officials, and we have been closely monitoring and advocating for some kind of amendment or repeal of what's called the Sterling Act. The Sterling Act was enacted in 1932, to the benefit of Philadelphia, first-class cities, that they can tax surrounding counties. If you work in Philadelphia, but you live in Doylestown Township, as 518 of our residents did in 2017, Philadelphia earns 230,000, or 230 million, 220,000 dollars. And we lose, as a result, 245,000 dollars of tax every year, or more. Next year, it depends on how often or how many individuals working out here, or work in, live out here, work in Philadelphia. So we lose that earned income tax in Doylestown Township, to the tune of 1 mil, 245, almost 1 mil. So we're desperately, well, not desperately, but we are pretty anxious about and eager to have some kind of amendment. There's a legislative bill right now, and a Senate bill in the works, to see if we can get some parity and equality, to, you know, not have all our money, our earned income tax be sapped by Philadelphia. If, we're not in such bad shape. If you live in Ben Salem, there are 3,700 people in Ben Salem Township who work in Philadelphia. Ben Salem Township loses over $2 million to Philadelphia. So there has to be some end to this, and it's been going on for a long time. So we're, I just want to update the board on those efforts, and I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Okay. Rick, do you have anything else?
No, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, unfinished business, the Pebble Ridge, Woodridge. Mr. Butler?
Okay, on the screen, you can see the Pebble Ridge Sewer Project layout. In the green outline is the completed work to date, as of basically today. In the orange is the next four weeks, which is the last part of Pebble Ridge Road, Stony Lane, and a portion of Woodridge Avenue, or, I'm sorry, Woodridge Drive. This will be the next four weeks, plus or minus, depending on stone and weather. So far, the weather's been very cooperative. The stone has not, but we are getting through it. The next change in construction will be about six weeks. We're looking at mid to late October to have a second crew start. They will start down at Lower State Road, which, on this drawing, is the top-left corner, where the pump station is. They're going to begin to bring that line and the force main from the station up, and tying it into the sewer that we will be laying in the next four weeks on Woodridge. Timing-wise, we're still shooting for the middle of next summer to complete, possibly sooner if the winter is mild, as it sometimes is. It's really going to be a crapshoot. There is a item that I was going to discuss today about low-pressure versus gravity, which we pushed off to the October meeting, because of some numbers that we put together. I actually formally, I guess you call it a boo-boo. I'm trying to fix that boo-boo. So I want to get that out to the residents before we meet. I didn't want to try to jam it in today, so we're going to do that on October 1st. But right now, we are also coordinating with the operations of the township for paving. So there will be some cost sharing that we would have done for restoration, that will be done in conjunction with the township. And we'll work that out with the solicitor to make sure we can do that, and get that taken care of.
Okay, thank you.
Other than that, unless there's questions, that's pretty much it.
Yeah, I got one question. And it relates to the timing and the working with the operations group. Because as we go through our, we had a session today, our budgeting session, what are we going to be able to do this year, what are we going to be able to do in 2020, and what we need in 2021? And it would be appreciated if we could have a more detailed schedule, so Dave can plan his capacity as to when all those other streets will, timeframes that'll be done, and also so we can communicate it back to the residents. So...
Yeah, we can do that. The only thing that I would caveat it with is, because of the rock varying, it slows us down sometimes where it can throw us off.
Understood.
But we can give them, I can give them a schedule from now to the end of the year that we can pretty much stick to. I think I gave them the next six, like I said, the next six to eight weeks of where we should be.
Do you have one to mid-2020, when you said you thought?
We can project. I mean, I can project the whole rest of the job based on segments, because again, with the second crew, you're going to be doing twice as much production.
Correct, right.
The other thing we want to do too with them, is as we start to move, we want to find out what's easier for him to pave behind us, because I need, I still need to bring trucks in.
Right.
So I don't want to have him paving roads, and then I'm going to start tearing up by driving trucks.
Correct. That was the whole discussion we had yesterday. So, that schedule would help a lot.
And what we're doing, when we finish Pebble Ridge Road, that portion, we will no longer be coming in on Pebble Ridge Road. We'll start to come in on Woodridge, so that that can be dealt with at whatever, you know, time schedule Dave has, and we won't interfere with it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would you please come up and, to the microphone, ma'am? We need your name and your address.
My name is Vicki Sales. I live on Alm's House, near Pebble Crest. And I just heard that there's a change on the meeting, but if we just wanted to comment on the type of feed that we want, would we do that tonight or October 1st? Because we were told to come and give our opinion.
That would be the October 1st meeting, and we will send, did you give the email address to, were you at the first meeting, on the 17th?
No, I work at night. I had to take the night off.
Can I get your email address? So what I'll do is, I'll forward you the new numbers to everybody before the meeting, so you can look at them. And then you can either comment right away on an email, or you can come to the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's John Prock. I live at 1030 Alm's House.
Mr. Prock, you need to talk into the microphone. Thank you.
John Prock, I live at 1030 Alm's House. When can we be expecting the, the proposal?
The update. Yeah, I'm going to try to get it out to you next week, mid-next week, so you have some time to look at it. Like Kate said, if you have any questions, just email me right away. Otherwise, we can discuss it at the meeting. But I'm hoping that correcting the omission I had should allow you to get a better feel for the exact numbers, rather than the ballparking I was kind of doing, like when we were emailing back and forth.
Yes, okay.
So it'd be much firmer to look at it. It'll give you a better feel for it.
Okay, thank you. And has the engineering?
You got to talk into the microphone.
Sorry, get shorter.
Has the, has engineering been done for this change yet? And has money been spent making this change?
No, the only, the only engineering that's been done is just a review of the calculations, the numbers that we're talking about. Nothing's been done, because we haven't made the decision. But any of that would be absorbed in the contingency. So it's not something that's going to change the overall cost to the homeowners.
And will the plans, at the August 15th meeting, we saw plans that had bore depths everywhere. They are not the plans that are on the township website. When will, will they get updated?
I can send the updated, we did that for the meeting, to show the bore depths.
Correct.
So we can give you, there's, I think it's three sheets. We'll give them to the township to post for you, so that you can look at them.
And I believe some of the, maybe one of the lines has been shortened.
Right, there was somebody who connected to the other, right. So that's actually, that would have happened regardless of gravity versus, so that's going to be shortened when we do the cost estimate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thanks, Mr. Butler. Well, come on up.
Hi, my name is Craig Scott. I live at 20 Militia Hill Road. Sort of getting up to speed on this whole issue. I've talked to John and everything. It's a complicated issue, and it's a painful issue for senior citizens like myself, who didn't expect to be paying big bucks for public sewage, when we're having no problems with contamination of our private system, and sort of following all the rules. And we all want clean water, so I like to say that. I'm not fighting what's necessary. But I would urge the township to be very sensitive to the fact that there is a big outlay by private homeowners, and anything we can do to mitigate the cost for homeowners would be greatly appreciated. This would include working as hard as possible to seek public funding, to go against the overall cost. I know we've gotten one grant, but been denied another. I don't know what else is out there. But I would certainly encourage the Board of Supervisors to work hard to get public funding, and if not in this year, if it's an annual submission process for the next year. I've also heard talk about a development, a Toll Brothers development. I don't know much about it. I've heard they may outlay $25,000 per property. I have no idea how many units are in that complex, or when it's planned. But I'd like to understand the arithmetic of how might we tie more homes into this sewage system, so that the cost per household goes down. Because right now, the price tag is capped supposedly at about $35,000, and that doesn't include connecting from our home to the piping system. So, I just want to get out there, the sensitivity for homeowners like myself and my neighbors, who have been diligent in keeping non-contaminated septic systems alive. And I'd love to appreciate the efforts that you're making to help us keep those costs down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Scott, I would just like to say, your email was very succinct and cogent, and it's a big benefit to us and to the rest of the residents who are copied on that email. So hopefully, you got the answers you wanted, and if not, continue that. It goes to all the residents. And I think it's been a big help for us to get to the residents. So we appreciate your email.
Sir?
Good evening. Gary Porter, 45 Militia Hill Road. Thank you very much, Craig. You expressed our position well. But I have a question. Coming here tonight, I was unsure as to where, what is the status of the change in the septic system, sewer system, in Militia Hill Road, from a large pipe to a small pipe? What just is the status of it?
We, I sent an email, and unfortunately, if you weren't on the email list, you didn't get it. But we're going to discuss that on October 1st. We were supposed to do it tonight, but there was a numbers issue. And I wanted to make sure I corrected it before I sat down with everyone. So what we're going to do is, if you can give me your email address, if you have one, I will send you out when we get the numbers corrected, so you have the comprehensive layout of what that impact's going to be. So when we have the meeting on October 1st, you can come and voice your, you know, agreement or disagreement with it, however you, or you can email me right away, if you have any questions with what we send out. But we will keep you updated.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. Is there one more hand now?
Thank you.
We're good now. Thank you. Proposed amendment to Doylestown Township 2008 Comprehensive Plan. Ms. Judy Stern-Goldstein.
First of all, before Judy makes her presentation, the board tonight is being asked to consider an amendment to your comprehensive plan. And as required by the municipality's planning code, I advertise this public hearing tonight on July, hold on a minute. Here we go, I'm sorry, on August 28, and again, on September 4. And I believe that the manager sent a notification to adjoining municipality, as well as to the school district. And we have met the requirements with respect to public notice of this public hearing on the new comprehensive plan amendment. So Judy?
Thank you, Jeff. The comprehensive plan amendment, whoops, the comprehensive plan amendment that you see before you tonight was developed in conjunction with the Planning Commission through 2017, 2018, and they made their recommendation in early 2019. What this includes was a full review, analysis, and update of the demographic section of the comprehensive plan, to bring that into compliance with current 2017 data, and going up through 2040 projections for population. It also included a thorough review of the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. It included updating the existing land use map, which you see on the screen now. We went through every parcel in the township laboriously, and updated the current land use. Just one second. From there, the Planning Commission and our group looked at the policies and implementation strategies of the comprehensive plan, updated the future land use map, which you see in front of you, accordingly. Included a couple other recommendations in the implementation strategies as updates, including to be an age-friendly community, and also to address the development, redevelopment, and adaptive reuse of existing parcels and land uses, to make them more friendly and appropriate for mixed-use development and a walkable community. That really is the, the update before you. There was a review from Bucks County Planning Commission. They did not have any comments, other than the fact that the maps were not forwarded to them, but the maps are here, and they're part of the update. The only other remaining issues are that the bike and hike map will be included in addition to these two maps with the update. And the list of planning documents has been updated to include any documents that were adopted by the township since the prior adoption.
Number six includes everything since, since the original comprehensive plan, everything since 1989.
Yes.
So, they're not additional, they're just everything. Only the first four are additional.
A, B, C, and D are additional, but the entire list was updated, because the list was updated for the 2008.
And eight, yes.
Right, so when this adopt, when this resolution takes place, it will be in the front. We wanted everything to be listed.
Okay. It's just, it was misleading to me when I read, "The following additional studies, reports shall be incorporated and become part of the comprehensive plan," but they already were part of the comprehensive plan.
You're correct.
So, it's, you know, wordsmith, I guess. And I'm sorry, I don't mean to be critical.
That's fine.
I know you were reticular for stuff like this.
Yeah.
All right. The plan has been presented, updating the comprehensive plan to include these additional items through 2018, and the new census material. Is there a motion to approve the?
You need to have a public comment. You need to ask for comments from the public.
Thank you for keeping me legal. Any comments from the public? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the comprehensive plan update?
Make a motion we approve the ordinances, changes that Judy allowed.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the proposed zoning ordinance amendment to C-17 and a C-3.
Pursuant to the board's direction, I prepared and advertised an ordinance which would amend Chapter 175, which is your zoning ordinance, so as to permit use C-17, which is personal care home for senior adults in the C-3 commercial zoning district, and adding certain criteria... certain criteria related thereto, which had to do with the number of beds that may be within the independent living units, not be subject to that. And pursuant to that request, a copy of the ordinance was sent to the Bucks County Law Library, a copy was sent to the intelligencer, notice of the hearing was published on two occasions in the intelligencer. In addition, a copy of the proposed ordinance was sent to the Bucks County Planning Commission as well as the Doylestown Township Planning Commission, who have made comment. At this point, just like previously, it's time for the board to conduct a public hearing and take the appropriate action as you would see fit.
Okay, opening the hearing up to any considerations, questions, comments from the public? Hearing none. Is there anything from the board?
I make a motion, it's just a lot, lot line change for Tabor Farms.
Not the lot line change.
Sorry? Withdraw that motion.
It's a zoning ordinance, C, C-17 to C-3.
Ah, okay. I make a motion that we approve the zoning ordinance amendment, use C-17 in C-3 district.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions, considerations? Calling the question, all in favor?
Aye.
I will abstain because of my family interest in this project. Next item on the agenda is land development for Tabor Farms.
The first matter for your consideration is Tabor, this relates to tax parcels 9-9-67 and 9-12-11. Tabor Homes LLC has submitted an application for a minor subdivision plan for the two parcels so as to modify the lot lines between the two parcels such that 1.609 acres will be transferred from tax parcel 91211 to 9967. New tax parcel 9-9-67 will now consist of 20.547 acres and tax parcel 9-12-11 will now consist of 9.311 acres. Plans that relate to the lot line adjustment were prepared by Gilmore Associates, were dated August 15, 2019, have not been revised. Your Planning Commission at its meeting on September 10, 2019, recommended approval of the minor lot line subdivision plan. If the board was so inclined, I have about four, five conditions that would be related thereto, if you're ready for me to recite those. First is compliance, the Boucher and James Review Letter dated September 4, 2019. Next, compliance with the Michael Baker International LLC Review Letter dated August 22, 2019. Next receipt of all permits approved, many agencies having jurisdiction. Next, recording of the deed of consolidation. And lastly, the applicant relate, shall reimburse the township any old costs incurred with respect to the application. Mr. Carter, you want to add anything?
Mike Carr of Eastburn and Gray here on behalf of the applicant. Those conditions would be acceptable to us and I have nothing else to add.
Board, have any questions? In consideration of the Tabor Farms LLC minor subdivision lot line change, is there a motion?
For the sake of repeating myself, I would like to make a motion that we approve the lot line change for the Tabor Farms.
I'll second. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
I abstain. For the same reason, my family has an interest in this property. Okay, next item to Tabor Track preliminary and final land development.
The, this relates to tax parcel 9-9-67. The applicant, Tabor Farms LLC, has submitted an application requesting preliminary as final land development approval for a project, proposing the construction of approximately 10,000 square feet of a community center, 21,000 square feet of additional office space and a 148-bed personal care facility for seniors. Included within those improvements are parking areas, dormitory management facilities and walking paths. Plans were prepared by Gilmore Associates, were dated June 28, 29. Your Planning Commission at its meeting on July 22, 2019, recommended approval of the land development application, subject to conditions. If you were so inclined, the appropriate conditions would be as follows. One, approval of the lot line adjustment related to adjoining property, which you just did. Compliance to Boucher and James Planning Review Letter dated July 17, 2019. Compliance with the Boucher and James Engineering Letter dated July 18, 2019. Compliance with the Michael Baker International LLC Review Letter dated July 16, 2019. Compliance with Bucks County Planning Commission Review Letter dated August 1, 2019, except for items four, five and seven. Next, the supervisors to grant waivers from the following provisions of the subdivision land development ordinance, most relate to minor details, nothing of significance. Section 15312A, Section 153-20C10, partial waiver from 15334B6B and Section 15334C2 related to a sample plot for identifying trees. Section 15338D10 and 15838F3C. In addition, the board grant a partial waiver for the requirements with respect to a traffic study with the understanding the applicant will utilize the services of TPD Engineering to comply with the PennDOT standards related to traffic study requirements since Eastern Road is a PennDOT road. Applicant shall work with the Doylestown Townshipal Authorities relates to public water. Receipt of all permits approved, many agencies having jurisdiction over such matters, including the Conservation District, PennDOT and the like. Funding and execution of development financial security agreements to form satisfactory solicitor. Applicant to contribute a 25 cents per square foot of new construction as an off-site construction contribution to the township who pays at the execution, funding of development and financial security agreements. Applicant to pay all costs incurred by the township in connection with the application and the plan shall be ADA compliant. Mr. Carter, you agree to those conditions?
We, we would agree to those conditions, yes, thank you.
Okay, any questions?
I have a question about the overall project. There, when I was looking through the materials, there was some question from the public, I believe, saying that they were concerned about some traffic issues related to, I think the example they gave was a hairstylist, like did the pub, would the public be able to access the hairstylist in the, in the senior center? Is, so again, one of the concerns that I have is that we have a large community center being proposed as part of this. Is that going to be available to the public to use or is that for residents?
The community center is shown on the plans as such. That is subject to change. We have not identified a, a, a way to, to build a community center, actually. There are other permitted uses that could be slotted into those spaces. The community center is not associated with the assisted living. The facilities associated with the assisted living, for instance, the hair salon, are not open to the public. They're exclusively for the residents of that assisted living center.
And this project, right now, it looks like it's office space, assisted living and this?
There, there's a Montessori school there, but yeah, that's generally what's proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Make a motion, we approve the preliminary final land development of the Tabor Track as recommended by the Planning Commission.
I second.
And in accordance with the conditions that I outlined.
And in accordance with the conditions that our solicitor outlined.
Second.
Any other questions, comments, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye, abstain.
Okay, moving on. Thank you. Thank you.
The, the next item, by way of background, is the discussion about what we've known this as having a variety of names. I've known it more recently as the Pavilion at Furlong, but now apparently it's now Ashbridge at Furlong. I think it's fair to say that this property has been the subject of many, 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 many public meetings, going back to a time, I don't know whether Jen was alive at the time we all started. And the last thing of significance was that the board did approve a stipulation agreement back in June of 2016 that was approved by the court. I believe Mr. Benner is here tonight to bring the board and those members of the public and those out there in the TV audience as to what the current plans are with respect to this project. I think it's been discussed at the Township Planning Commission for a good number of months. I don't think he's seeking any approval. I think he can speak for himself, but I believe he's seeking some direction from the board that the staff work on a modified stipulation. If that's how you're inclined to come back to the board with a final look see. Mr. Benner?
Mr. Garten, thank you for that very, that very excellent summary. It's quite accurate and once again, it's, it's my pleasure to come before this board. I made a point of not counting the number of times that I've come before this board and your Planning Commission. I think we're at the point where it's soon going to be the case that perhaps somebody might invite me to Thanksgiving dinner.
I don't think you're going to get invited, Mr. Benner.
Mr. O'Malley, he wants you to talk into the microphone.
I think, Bill, I think it may be better if you go to the podium. It seems that people can hear a little bit better from the podium.
So he was just saying he's hoping that someone invites him to Thanksgiving dinner.
Okay. Not hap-
On a more serious note, the, back in November 2018, Mr. Grasso and his-
We just want to make sure that- We need to talk more into the microphone so that they can hear in the back, right?
I'm not quite sure how I can do that.
Lean, lean in. There you go. Lean in.
Here, just like this. Like this? There you go.
There you go. Is that better?
This is quite a challenge. Beginning again, back in November 2018, the, the applicant appeared before the Planning Commission with a new vision for the property and that is to develop the, a Swamp and York Road property with a, an, with a project for independent living for seniors. As your solicitor highlighted, there had been a prior approval for a, for a mixed-use commercial industrial development back in 2016. Following the conclusion of that meeting, the Planning Commission was not able to reach any type of resolution, whether to move the project forward, to, to kill the project. There were concerns raised by individual members about traffic, about operations, about building design. And to, to bring some resolution and to give the Planning Commission some guidance, I appeared before this board in January this year, nine months ago, asking this board for some direction on how this project could move forward. And the consensus that this board reached was that if Mr. Grasso and his team was serious about developing the property for independent senior living, that he should focus his energies with the, with your Planning Commission. And that's exactly what has occurred for the last nine months. The first appearance occurred in February 25, 2019, when the Planning Commission saw the vision for the property once again. And at this point, let me just hand over to, to Scott to identify what was the, what the Planning Commission was considering.
Scott? Good evening. Scott Mill with Van Cleef Engineering. So here before you is the plan that was presented that evening. That was our first kind of go-around. There were comments about the shape of the building, how it laid out on the site, concerns about the orientation of the front of the building not being towards York Road, the parking and the loading area to the rear, or to the front facing York Road.
So following that input from the Planning Commission, Mr. Grasso empowered the development team to come up with a plan to address these concerns and that involved doing some preliminary civil engineering, creating a grading plan, placing, placing the building on the site in a way that worked with the contours of the land. So consequently, a couple of months later, the Planning Commission saw the, the next iteration of the project. And Scott, why don't you highlight some of the changes that occurred?
Mr. Bingler, would you like to come up and take a better look? Feel free. Come on around. You can come up here. Come stand up here. You're all, you're all welcome up here. Take a look.
Mr. Bingler?
If Mr. Bingler can't see-
Mr. Bingler, why don't you stand right beside me and you can look, and you can look at the plans very easily.
Scott, you can, you bring them out a little bit or?
Yeah, why don't you bring them on the other side? That may be better.
Yeah, but the mic's not-
Put the ease over there. You can use that mic when you're talking and you can stay there. Yeah, that way they'll see.
That'll be good. So we're moving it now, Mr. Bingler. Again.
Mr. Bingler, I was going to give you my seat.
Nope, not that far.
Right in front. Turn it towards, turn it, turn it towards- Where the microphone is.
By the microphone.
The middle microphone.
Turn it, turn it out towards the public. Well, we do, but.
Can we get it on our screens?
Mr. Bingler, it's well that you call in advance because there is a table for one right up front.
Okay, make sure you're talking to the microphone now.
Okay, so this was the second sketch plan where you can see architecturally it has changed in front of, instead of that X shape, it's more of a T shape. Worked a little bit better with the topography. We split the parking into two areas where we had an 80 parking lot, or parking space lot right in front oriented towards York Road with an additional 40 spaces possibly in reserve to also provide employee parking. The loading area was then also put towards the rear of the property. We looked at, as, as Bill mentioned, concept grading in stormwater to evaluate this, to make sure that the, the property would balance from a cut fill analysis as well as work from a stormwater analysis.
Following that meeting, the, the Planning Commission was interested in knowing what the onsite amenities would be for the residents of the community. And the Planning Commission was also concerned about how the, how the project would receive water and sewer, expressing concern about the ability of residents who had failing sewer systems might be able to connect. So consequently, Mr. Grasso authorized the engineering team to design a, a sewer distribution system that would have a low-pressure forced main, which would allow for individual homeowners to connect if they were so inclined. So Scott, why don't you take a moment or two and highlight some of the onsite amenities that got added to the plan?
Sure. So we added a, a path that essentially created a loop around the site. It was about a third of a mile in length. Added a couple gazebos and some outdoor recreation area as well as some park benches and bicycle racks.
Planning Commission invited the applicant back, requesting the applicant to consider changing the, the bulk of the building. The Planning Commission expressed concern that a four-story building might be inappropriate for this location and inquired whether the applicant would consider making the building three stories and lessening the visual effect of the bulk of the building. So consequently, in, in June of this year, the, the next iteration of the project was presented to the Planning Commission. And Scott, do you have that plan? So why don't you take a minute or two and highlight some of the changes?
Scott, maybe before you do that, you just turn around and give the board a look at it before you describe it, before you put it back that way.
So what, what Scott is going to be highlighting is the design that now shows a three-story building. Let me emphasize that the unit count has stayed the same throughout, 124 units, primarily one-bedroom, and that has not changed.
Okay, so as Bill mentioned, the, the height of the building went from four stories to three. Architecturally, you can see the shape of the building where in the T shape in the prior version, the arms- prior version, the arms have a bend to them now, which work even better with the topography in kind of wrapping around and following the contour of the hill. The parking lot was changed slightly, not a whole lot. We still show the park-like amenities with the walking trail, as well as the gazebos, the outdoor recreation, and the gardening areas.
At the planning commission's June meeting, the planning commission requested me to prepare a memorandum highlighting the changes that had occurred to the project and to highlight the agreements or the commitments that Mr. Grasso's company authorized me to make during these preceding meetings with the planning commission. I believe the board has in its packet the memorandum that I had prepared, and that memorandum then formed the foundation for the planning commission to take action at its July meeting. So what is before you is the project that the applicant is prepared to move forward with if the board is so inclined. As Mr. Garten correctly highlighted, it is premature to ask the board to amend the stipulation or to approve the project that's currently before you. What the applicant is requesting this evening, if the board is so inclined, if you find merit in this project, that is to say, if you feel that the development of the land for senior independent housing is a better alternative than the mixed-use development, then you should adopt a resolution or a motion that authorizes your professional staff, your solicitor, your various engineers, your township manager, to work with the applicant and their consultants to come up with a modification to the stipulation and settlement agreement, which would then be presented back to the planning commission for its anticipated endorsement and back before this board for your serious consideration.
Fair enough. What do you think, guys?
Well, I think, Mr., I know Mr. Benner, even though it was a difficult year, a lot of consternation and struggles, I think we got a product that's vastly better than what it was in the beginning of this year. And I think the changing of the structure and getting it from four stories to three stories was a big, big change. And you can see that by the planning commission's minutes. They worked on this for, as I said, many, many months. So I think this is a good direction to go. I think, I know you want to hear from the public, but I'll make the motion that Mr. Garten and Mr. Benner get together and work on a stipulated agreement based on the notes from the planning commission and staff.
I'll second that motion. I appreciate the consideration for the planning commission's recommendations and the work that you've put into this. So I'll second.
But just have a clarification. Jeff isn't, at this point, going to be doing any amendment?
Well, no. If the board proceeds with that motion, Mr. Benner and I and Stephanie and the engineers will come together and craft a proposed amendment to the existing stipulation that'll go back to the planning commission for review and come back to here for your consideration. There's no approval. I'm just going to, we're going to prepare a draft of something that you can review.
I just wanted to get that, that sequence down. Mr. Benner, I have a, we have in our packet a three-page memorandum, and you authored it.
Correct.
It has no date on it. Is this what we should be considering when we think about this?
Yes.
The short answer is yes. There were a couple of modifications that the planning commission made to that condition when they passed their recommendation. They're small changes, but they're important. So if the board were inclined to move ahead-
Maybe in our next packet, you could include, do another memo with those considerations in, so we can just think about it.
Well, I believe that what you have, this memorandum is now in the public record. The minutes of the planning commission is now in the public record.
I was trying to get you to do, like, you know, put it all together for us, where we are.
Well, we will eventually do that with the amended stipulation.
All right, never mind. But can you tell me when this was authored, so I can put it in my sequence of papers? Because it has no date on it.
I believe, I believe it was authored around July 15. I don't have the exact date.
Would that be before or after one of the planning commission meetings?
It would have been before the July 22 planning commission meeting.
Thank you.
Maybe about seven days before.
Okay, thanks. All right, there's a motion and a second. Yes, I'll comment. Mr. Bingler?
How did you know that?
I know you. How long have I known you?
I do have a question. Last time that they were there for the stipulation to go to the judge, that's how you do it, was probably two years ago. You took away the exit or the entrance on 313. That went to the judge, okay? I asked a question then, if you needed two ingress and egresses for this project. And I said, now that you've taken away the 11313, that means you have to use Rogers Road. I said, so now we're going to be exiting on the Rogers Road. We've fought this project for, I can't tell you how many years, and it's always been for one road in, no road out. Mrs. Lyons, you said to me, when I said to you that the only way is to come out on the Rogers Road, you said that will never happen. You go back and look at the television. So I'm asking, why are we coming out on the Rogers Road?
I think what we said now, I don't remember. I don't have that-
Yeah, that's a, I've kept this in my mind, Barbara, for a long time.
Well, you can go out Rogers Road, but you can't make a right. Same with the temple. They can go onto Rogers Road, but they can't make a left. That was what I-
I don't see that on this plan.
That's what I recall. I mean, there was always the, that, remember the pork chop and all kinds of configurations? So that when you left that development, whatever the Grasso configuration was, you couldn't exit onto Rogers Road and make a right, but you could make a left. Coming from the temple, you could not make a left, because I recall that specifically.
I understand that.
So Rogers Road was always, or at least most of the time, was considered one of those roads.
Right. They were supposed to line up so we could go across and do all this stuff. So with this project, when they come down to Rogers Road, they're not going to be able to take a right.
Correct. That was discussed at the planning commission, and the applicant agreed to that restriction. Obviously, when, what you're referring to was under the old plan, that's still part of the existing stipulation. Obviously, this would be a new plan attached to a revised amended stipulation if it gets through that process. But yes, they agreed that at the planning commission, that was something discussed, that they're proposing in this case to be able to access from Rogers, but they cannot make a right-hand turn.
If I may, just to be-
Is there going to be a pork chop on this one, so they can't make a-
We don't know the configuration.
We haven't gotten that far yet. We're not, we're not-
You stay tuned, and you help with the planning process. Make sure you get what you want.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, just to be clear, the memorandum that we've been talking about makes clear, under traffic improvements and quoting, "If the governing body resolves to amend the governing stipulation, the owner commits to the following traffic improvements." And then Item B under that list is quoting, "Provide a no-right-turn traffic sign to restrict right-turn exit movements onto Rogers Road from the property and full movement accessway into the property." And I would anticipate that this condition would become part of the governing stipulation.
And it may be more than just a sign when we finish, too.
And that is correct, Mr. Garten.
I agree. May be more than just a sign. Thank you. I think there's a motion and a second? Mr.- Yeah, any other comments? Seeing none, hearing none. I'm going to call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're good to go, Mr. Benner. Congratulations.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission Grant Award regarding the 202 Trail Feasibility Study. And I think the only thing that we have to do here is enter the contract. All right?
That is correct.
Accept the money. I do believe, I saw somewhere, there's a $30,000 award project, award for feasibility and study, and a $7,500 in-kind match.
That is correct. $2,500, that is coming from Mr. Kelso, worth of consulting and assistance, $2,500 from Baker Engineers, and then $2,500 in-kind services as well from Doylestown Township.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody, for your generosity. All right, is there consideration for this agreement?
Do we need a motion?
You'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on the agreement between Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission, Doylestown Township. I'm calling the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And then following this is a, where am I going? Michael Baker proposal for the feasibility study to do this work. Is there a motion to approve that?
Make the motion.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Does this piece of work have to get bid, or can we just approve a $30,000?
Well, the retention of a professional service doesn't require a bid. When you do the actual construction, you'll have to do a public bid.
For the construction?
Yes. Not for the design, no.
And they have so much familiarity with our plants and their, and our trails, and they have worked on all of our projects, so feel very confident with Michael Baker International. Is anyone here from Michael Baker?
We've been using them since 2002. We were talking about it this morning in the bike committee. And the fact that we've got multiple projects that are all on schedule with them. And I think they're a key team member at this point in terms of getting grants. They produce, the state likes them, DVRPC likes them, so we're recommending that we stay with Michael Baker on this one.
Okay. I forget, is there a motion?
There's a motion and a second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was there a second?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure. I got a question down the other end.
I made the motion.
Yeah, Ryan made the motion. I don't, Jen, did you second that? I didn't, but I will. I'll do it again.
We, I think we have a motion and a second. All right. Records retention disposition. Resolution 2148, self-explanatory. Anybody have any questions regarding this? Something we have to do often to purge records that no longer need to be retained. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2148?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the 2009 Fee Schedule Amendment created by our office manager, that's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Resolution 2149, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Zoning Hearing Board application of Mark and Frances Fisher. What do you say?
I would leave this matter to the zoning hearing board, but I would like the board's approval to send a letter of support for the application. This is a historic property in the township, one that contributes greatly in preserving a grist mill and is now an active, has been an active grist mill for a while, and I think would be one that we should support to the zoning hearing board. They're adding some, they're outside of the floodplain, of course, but they are adding some agricultural and some additional storage facilities on their property.
I agree.
I agree as well. All right, you may send a letter.
The thing that I didn't notice, though, is how big these things were.
Yeah.
Just as a various sizes. So I don't, yeah.
They're like, no more than like 30 feet tall. They're within, they're not asking for a variance from the height limitations.
Okay, okay. I was just curious what it looked like. They're storing like the grain that they mill. It's an amazing thing.
Yeah.
I will tell you, when I was a kid, I used to roll past there, and the grandfather, the people that know, used to holler at us for riding by his grist mill and our tubes, inner tube, on the chaminie.
Like the nostalgia.
Can't see you in an inner tube.
Not nowadays. I was much thinner in those days.
All right. Treasurers, wait, wait, we don't need a motion on that. You're going to send a letter of support.
Consensus.
Treasurers' Report, September 17, 2019.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the bills list.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
September 17th, isn't that the day in 1776 the Constitution was ratified? That's what I think. It's a special day. All right, real quick, announcements are important. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, October 1st at 5:00 p.m., and right before that, at 3:00 p.m., we're going to have our fourth budget work session. Thompson Performing Arts Series presents Disney's Mary Poppins Returns at the CNN Bank Amphitheater Saturday, September 28th at dusk. It's free to everybody. Discussion of the indoor facility for Parks and Recreation in Doylestown Township is Thursday, that's this Thursday, the 19th, at 7:00 p.m. They're asking you to arrive here at 6:30 to sign in. Leaf and Yard Recycling is the third Saturday of each month from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00, and you enter at the central, New Britain Road entrance to Central Park. Kids Castle is going to be open sometime in mid-October. Stay tuned. And 2019 Suicide Prevention Conference is at Del Valle, 8:30 to 4:30 on October 7th. You can get a link to this conference on our website, DoylestownPA.org. And we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Oh, we have, excuse me, don't leave. We have one item.
Don't leave, Cynthia.
This is, go ahead.
I just want the board to know that Cynthia Veil, who's been working with us as our minute taker for over 10 years, will be moving on. And I just, on behalf of the board, want to wish you all the best and present you with one of our bicentennial tiles, and thank you for all your work over the years.
Cynthia's been through some rollicking times with this board and how, you know, everybody wanted her to take minutes or not take minutes. Anyway, so her grace and her accuracy has always been very much appreciated. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you for the planning commission. She also does the minutes for the planning commission for many, many years.
We will miss you.
Yes.
Very much so. Okay, are we adjourned now?
We are, but there are documents to be signed.